Good afternoon, I apologize for being stuck in traffic from downtown. So, let's get started. Yes, item number 1A is the approval of the minutes from last time, from February 14th.
No more.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, minutes approved. Policy calendar items, item 1B. I'll let the vice chancellor.
We are asking you to consider an associate in science and museum studies offered by Queensborough Community College. This is really a wonderful program. It will prepare students for entry-level work in the gallery and museum field. It offers courses in administration, conservation, and curatorial work along with foundation and art history. The curriculum allows students to prepare also for successful transfer to a baccalaureate college, and the entire curriculum does in fact articulate with the bachelor's program in art history at Queens College. President Marti is here, and I want to commend him on really a very thoughtful and necessary program. Students who will be in this degree program will also do an internship at an art museum. And all of you know that Queensborough Community College has its own art gallery, which has a first-rate permanent collection of African art, and also hosts other exhibits in the contemporary field. The gallery has been featured in a number of higher education publications and in New York outlets as well. And because of the relationship that the university, the college, has with other art museums, students at Queensborough Community College will be able to intern at other venues in the city. So this, you know, we ask you to consider this program. It is really, I think, a terrific one and represents all the qualities that exist at Queensborough Community College: stellar faculty, art history courses, and also the infrastructure of the gallery to ensure that students not only have the theoretical knowledge, but the hands-on knowledge.
Questions?
Not a question, just a comment. The program is so New York and so cultured. I love this stuff, so this is great.
Very New York.
Yeah.
Item number...
No, no, Professor.
Oh, sorry.
I'd just like to say that I like the feature of automatic articulation. Articulation is a large issue for many of our student community colleges, and the feature of articulation at Queens College is something that we like to see in many programs.
You want to vote individually on each item? So, do I have a motion to move this item?
No more.
Second.
Item C, policy item number B2, City College MPA in Public Service Management. Oh, sorry, I made my mistake. All those in favor, please say aye. I'm not taking you for granted. All those in...
The president is very worried about that.
I can see I'm in a hurry today. All those opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Item number B2, City College MPA in Public Service Management.
This is a 45-credit program. It's an interdisciplinary program that will bring faculty together from sociology, political science, and economics. And its goal is to encourage more students to enter public service, particularly students from underrepresented populations. And for those of us who are watching what is happening in Washington, DC, you will notice that there is an increasing number of people retiring from federal public service. And actually, there are organizations that are trying desperately to partner with colleges and universities so that these higher education institutions will create programs that will encourage students to become the next generation of federal and state workers. And so City College really is ahead of the curve here, and I will attribute that to the provost, who I see in the audience. Provost, dig on. This is a program that will be attractive to students because students will be able to obtain employment either at the local level, the state level, or the national level. In addition, students who are interested can use the expertise they gain working in non-governmental organizations in managerial, supervisory, and policymaking capacities. Also, the students who are enrolled in this program will have the connection of the Charles B. Rangel Center, which Mr. Chairman, CAPR, reviewed in a previous meeting. And this center will allow students to have resources available to them, a library, conference facilities, and will also help place students in internships. Because of the Rangel Center, City College expects also to invite visiting scholars and outstanding public servants to the campus, and those faculty will be involved in the education and training of students in the MPA. So again, this is a program that's important, will train, I hope, large numbers of students who will be very much needed in public service in the next generation.
Post-baccalaureate education is one of the most important things this university can add to its already generous collection of degree offerings, and it is a program that will be very useful to people in the community. Strongest supporters.
We're all in agreement here. Any other questions? No? I have a potential to move this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, motion carries. Item number B3, Ostos Community College and John J. College of Criminal Justice.
The next two items on the agenda, and I will take them each sequentially and separately, but the next two items on the agenda involve Ostos Community College and John J. College of Criminal Justice. The first program, 1B3, is a dual admission in science for forensics and forensic science. This is a joint degree proposal that has been prepared within the framework of the John J. Partnership Initiative. As you remember, John J. has as part of its strategic plan to shed its associate degrees from John J., but to work with community colleges so we still provide access to forensic and criminal justice education at the associate degree level. And John J., and the provost from John J., Jane Bowers, is here. John J. has worked closely in partnership with the provost from Ostos Community College, who's also here alongside the president. And this was a partnership, you know, done in a way that I think can be rare, because it was truly a merger of two different campuses that have frankly a common interest. But it's not always so easy to accomplish these things, and we pay tribute to those of you who have led this effort and made it possible. This is a program that will allow students at Ostos to take a series of courses which will allow them to transfer seamlessly to the baccalaureate program with John J. This might be an articulation program that we model in different ways in the future. We know from the data at CUNY and also from data at other institutions that those students at the associate degree level who actually complete the associate degree and then transfer to a baccalaureate will graduate from the baccalaureate campus in higher numbers. And so we are very confident that the students who receive the associate's degree, transfer to John J., will in fact be successful at John J. They will have guidance, they will have academic support, and they'll have a clear goal of what their academic program looks like, right from the beginning at Ostos all the way through John J. and into their own professional identity. Now forensic science has received a lot of attention, both in the media and in the public. And so these programs will of course be very popular for students, and the degree will allow them to enter, you know, an entry-level position in forensic science, or in fact move on to graduate education. This is a very rigorous course of study with rigorous science courses that students will have to take. And so in order to transfer to John J. College, students will have to maintain a 2.5 grade point average in their core science courses. And so that will allow them then to get the training and the education they need to be successful at John J., and we're confident that this will be taken seriously and will happen.
I'll say we can move both items together.
Do you want me to go on to the criminal justice one? The next item, 1B4, is the dual admission between John J. and Ostos in criminal justice. And in this program, graduates will be qualified for a wide range of entry-level positions in governmental and private agencies that require security, public safety, or law enforcement credentials. Students may select a concentration in law and due process, the police and the community, or the courts and the criminal justice system. And again, this is a program that aims to address the underrepresentation of women and minorities in the criminal justice field. Students will have no requirements for transfer to John J. except having to take a standard curriculum that's agreed upon in advance and earning a minimum of a 2.0 grade point average, which is the necessary grade point average required for graduation with an associate's degree. So these two programs really speak to what John J. sought to do, and Ostos was a terrific partner in order to make this happen.
I was concerned when I first heard that John J. was in the process of shedding its associate degree programs. I'm glad to see these, but I hope that continuing attention will be paid at both ends, at the John J. and at the Ostos end, to make sure that the program works the way, you know, we envision it, that students will have access to the baccalaureate programs. I think that's important, but we can't let it slip. We'll need to continue to work on it.
Well, I think, you know, we have the provosts here in the audience, Jane Bowers and Daisy Coco Di Filipez, and they have heard your comment. I have enormous confidence in both these provosts. They will maintain vigilance and ensure that students get what they need.
I also support this. The nature of these programs illustrates something that this committee doesn't directly deal with, but other committees on the board do. These are costly programs to run, and the community colleges, as we know, are not funded to an excessive degree. They need all the funding they can get to run programs like this with the quality that these programs need, both in terms of the capital and operating budget. It's not a matter for this committee, but at the same time, it's something we have to be aware of. Again, strongly support these programs.
Thank you, and duly noted.
Just a curious question. One degree you're requiring a 2.5 and one only a 2.0. Is there a specific reason for that difference?
Yes, because the forensic program is filled with science courses, and both, and so the science courses that the students take in the general education curriculum at Ostos must be taken at a high enough level for them to move into a baccalaureate program filled with science courses. And so it is important that they develop the study skills and the knowledge that is important so that they can transfer and do well in the upper division science courses.
Yeah, they have a heavy load of organic chemistry and some pretty challenging courses.
It's a very serious program.
It really is.
It's a very serious, so, you know, the criminal justice program, you know, a C is required, a 2.0 is required for, you know, for graduation and for entrance into the program, but, you know, it was, a lot of thought was given to what kind of standards are important to ensure student success at the baccalaureate level. It's not fair to accept students into the baccalaureate program if they haven't, if they don't have what is necessary to succeed.
Do we ever require higher than 2.5?
Well...
Yes, at some of our campuses, we have higher. This is ubiquitous at baccalaureate institutions, that students start in a baccalaureate institution, but when they want to get into a specific program, they have to have a higher bar because of the rigor of the curriculum over the years. The Baruch, for example, is a good example of students starting the BBA program, but if they want to get into one of the tracks, they may have to have something as high as a 2.75, sometimes a 3. So it's ubiquitous across the university. This is really...
Also, we have requirements for students who will begin their undergraduate education at community college and move to a baccalaureate campus in order to attend the teacher academy, for example, where we're training math and science teachers. They need a higher grade point average than normal in order to ensure that they can do the upper division work in math and science.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to move item 1B3 and 1B4?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, motion carries. Item number 1B5, John J. College of Criminal Justice, BA in English.
John J.'s a lot on this agenda today. So John J., you know, also as part of its forward-looking strategic planning, John J. College of Criminal Justice wanted to strengthen its liberal arts and humanities offerings. And one of the ways it is doing this is to develop specific majors. This is a BA in English. John J. has a very large faculty, I believe over 45, 46 full-time faculty in English. It is a huge faculty, and so the college has the faculty to carry this out. And what's interesting here is a student who wants to major in English can take a traditional English major and so study the traditional texts and methodologies of literary study, or they can major in English with a concentration that integrates questions of criminal justice and law. And so this allows students to actually connect to the mission of the college. And I think this is a very innovative curriculum. It is writing-intensive, research-intensive. It will teach students not only about great books, great texts, but it will teach students how to research, and write, and think, and analyze. Many students who are majoring in English find themselves going on to graduate work in a range of fields, including professional fields like the law. And so faculty at John J. believe this will be a degree that will allow students and prepare students for success in graduate education in law school because of the focus on writing and analytical skills. The cost of providing this degree is minimal because the faculty already exist, and many of the courses exist, and this will give breadth to the John J. and choice for students. You know, before this time, the English department was a service department, serving all of the other majors and serving general education in the college. Now, the college will have its own English department.
Anything happen now that this is required more than five years ago or 10 years ago? Or we really could have done it a while ago?
Sam, let me respond to that. When we were looking for a new president of John J. College, it occurred to me and others that John J. really needed to reinvent itself. It was largely a college that was dominated by associate degree students that came in, and if they did well and were motivated, they could get into a very limited group of baccalaureate programs. And if we really wanted to reimagine John J. as a much more traditional baccalaureate institution and stressing some programs at the master's level and even the PhD, that it would require a more robust curriculum that would be made available for students who thought that they may want forensic studies or police science studies, but when they were confronted with courses in history or English, became seduced by majoring in those fields. And if they had no opportunity to major in that field, the students would leave and go someplace else, and I thought that that was a disadvantage to John J. So when we thought about reimagining John J. College, it was really bifurcated in the following way, that they would cull from their inventory of coursework, programs specifically in associate degrees, but that they would have that associate degree opportunity with partnering institutions with a seamless transition into a baccalaureate institution, and then start developing a core of baccalaureate, traditional baccalaureate majors, mainly in the humanities and the social sciences. So this is really the first that we're seeing, and I imagine over time, we will start to see, and I hope we will see, the faculty develop some other programs that will be coming to CAPR and then brought to the full board, and really develop John J. into an institution that it never really was before.
Professor, thank you. Well, speaking personally, the more English departments that we have, the better. I'm very glad to see this. I hope that also continuing attention will be paid to the care and support for associate degree students, and you might want to assign Bleak House to every course that you give in that major. I support this program, it's wonderful.
Professor Philip?
It's my understanding that John J., before there were a series of retrenchments, had such a program. Good to see that John J. is covering its baccalaureate program in English. Other programs will be...
Any other comments? Can I have a motion on this item, please?
No more.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, motion carries. Item number 1B6, the School of Professional Studies at Graduate School and University Center.
The School of Professional Studies, under the auspices of the Graduate School and University Center, is offering to you a master's degree in labor studies. And, you know, this is an indication of the growth and development of the School of Professional Studies, and thanks to its dean, John Mogalescu, it has grown from a small unit, the School of Professional Studies, a small unit with a few certificate programs and some grant and contract work with city agencies, to a full-blown academic school. And this master's degree is an indication of just how far this unit has come. This is a 30-credit program whose goal is to prepare students for leadership in the labor movement, to give those who are in labor-related fields specialized knowledge needed for advancing their careers, and also to provide opportunities for people to do advanced research in the field of labor. Labor studies has changed over time, given that the world has changed. We live in a far more global environment, and labor leaders have to understand the world in which they operate, the economy in which they operate. This program emerges out of certificate programs at SPS and is fully confident that it will recruit and attract new students who are interested in labor studies as an academic discipline. We know that the New York Central Labor Council and affiliated unions are strong proponents of this program and may in fact be able to provide some financial support to their members who may enroll in this program. So I am delighted to support this program. I think it's terrific, and the high quality of faculty across the CUNY campuses who will be tapped to teach in this program, as well as an ability to recruit from outside, this program really can become a signature program within the School of Professional Studies, and indeed, I think, at City University.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, motion carries. Informational item?
If I may take a minute before the informational item on the master plan to provide some good news, and that is that we have, we at City University, have a new Truman scholar, David Bauer from CCNY, who as you know was the Intel Scholarship winner, has won a Truman Scholarship for Public Service. And so David Bauer has now a long list of awards associated with his name. And here's a student who could have gone to any college or university of his choice, chose to study at CCNY, and is now demonstrating that his studies have been, you know, singularly important to him and has allowed him to advance his interests. So he will take his place along other Truman Scholars at City University campuses. We also have a Goldwater Scholar at Queens College, Yehoshua Laker, who will also be studying in the field of science and technology. A Goldwater Scholarship is a more focused scholarship than the Truman, and we are just delighted that two of our students were able to compete nationally and in fact prevail. So I applaud the faculty and the staff at Queens and CCNY for producing these students. Jim Orozo, who's not here, is our director of student fellowships. He has been very influential on the campuses, helping to prepare students, interviewing students, trying to acquaint them with the demands of the interview process. And were he here today, he would have enjoyed basking in the refracted glory of these students' success. So, you know, kudos to Jim Orozo as well. I wanted just to take a little time to bring trustees up to date on the master plan. As you'll remember, we have to deliver to the state a master plan by June, and we will bring to this committee on June 2nd a completed master plan, and then it will go to a full Board of Trustees meeting at the end of the month of June. This has been a year-long process. In the fall of 2007, we created a planning document that we distributed widely to the campuses and to discrete groups, the University Faculty Senate, the University Student Senate, to just presidents, provosts, student affairs people, budget people, and so on. And we asked constituencies to comment on the planning document, send questions and comments back to us. Chancellor Goldstein asked specifically... Chancellor Goldstein asked specifically that this be a highly consultative process, and we have tried very hard, in fact, to work with campuses so that this master plan, which will imagine CUNY in 2012, it's a four-year master plan, will be the work of, of campus representatives as well as central office staff. And so, we received comments from the campuses at the end of November and spent the winter actually working on a document. And I want to recognize Erica Dreyfus, who, who is sitting in the audience there, who is the, the author of this master plan. And as someone who, who holds a doctorate in history, Erica understands the academy, understands research, understands higher education, but is a fabulous writer on top of it. And so, has been able to take really disparate ideas from colleagues in the central office as well as from the campuses and make sense of it and produce a draft document that we in fact distributed to the presidents and beyond that, again, to a wider constituency of people, the University Faculty Senate, the University Student Senate, and so on. And we asked for comments back by April 21st. And so, we hope that campuses actually read the document. It's, you know, it's a long document, 125 pages perhaps, and to read the document, to comment on it, to make sure that we have it right, to make sure that we haven't omitted something that we should include, and to offer their best suggestions on it. What we do in the master plan is we introduce where we've been over time and where we would like to go. And essentially, we asserted back in 1999 and continue to hold dear. We insist upon academic rigor, accountability, and assessment. We have an unwavering commitment to serving students from all backgrounds, and we are dedicated to supporting a world-class faculty. We take some time to summarize the, the change in 2000. We talk about a restructured admissions policy, our commitment to hiring hundreds of full-time faculty, our continuing commitment to high-demand programs in nursing and teacher education. We talk about our relationship and our, our deep support for the New York City Department of Education. Sixty percent, sixty percent of our first-time freshmen come from New York City public schools. We refer to the performance management process, which has been in place now for half dozen years, and talk about the importance of fundraising and the Invest in CUNY campaign. We, we also move on to priorities of the university prospectively. And we are, you know, we, we continue to believe in the power of the integrated university. And, you know, the School of Professional Studies, the Graduate School are, are units that really thrive on the consorcial to hire new faculty. We will continue our commitment to a K-16 approach to education. We talk about the embryonic stages of creating a CUNY School of Public Health at Hunter College. We refer again to the importance of the decade of science, our commitment to community colleges, something President Dolores Fernandez has talked a great deal about, and we've listened, is in this master plan. Our work in the Blackmail Initiative, in the Latino Faculty Recruitment Initiative also find a place, you know, in, in, in the master plan. But, you know, we're, we're, we're also considering how students learn and what they learn and what tools they use. And so, the, the libraries are important. Academic advising is important. And we think about what we need to offer to students, and particularly doctoral students, as they move through their careers at the CUNY Graduate School. Empowering students becomes a very important theme in this document. We talk about honors, the Honors College, the Macaulay Honors College. We talk about honors programs on the campuses, the importance of awards and fellowships that our students win. We talk about the ASAP program, which, you know, has more than a thousand students across our six community colleges. We also pay attention to veterans and to students with disabilities and to international students. And our goals are to serve those students to the very best of our abilities. We look forward also to rebuilding the campuses. And with a new Vice Chancellor for, for facilities, there's a lot of attention, not only on new construction, but on maintaining the buildings that we actually, you know, have on our campuses. So, we spend some time talking about a capital program overview and what it means to do facilities planning. Some of our campuses, as you know, aspire to be residential, to be residential campuses, to have a small percentage of the student body living in dormitories. And again, higher education literature tells us that those campuses that have even a small percentage of students living on campus have higher retention and graduation rates than fully commuter campuses. And so, you know, there will be, there'll be co-curricular programs for those students and a great deal of attention to them. We take our relationship to the city of New York very seriously. I briefly mentioned on the academic side, our attention to nursing education and teacher education. This is very important. CUNY does, does train the nurses and teachers of New York City, and we must continue to do that. We also care deeply about workforce development, and many of the agencies in New York City turn to the university for help in workforce development. Again, through Jay's intervention and Alan Wernick's good work, we have an immigration services program that is, you know, unrivaled anywhere in the United States, and we will, you know, continue that work. So, the, the master plan looks at where we've been, where we are, where we aspire to be, what our core values are, and how we hope to move in the future. Frankly, we also make the case that we have come, we have done as much as we can do with the resources as they are. Really move to the next step, CUNY needs additional resources, and we say this in the master plan. These are difficult budget times. They're going to get increasingly difficult, but we are being, you know, frank, frank and honest in this document. So, the next steps is, you know, include encouraging our constituencies across the campuses to read and comment on the master plan. And I know campuses are disseminating the master plan, you know, very differently. Some campuses have the master plan up on the website and are inviting comments. Other, in, on other campuses, presidents are holding small meetings with, with, with faculty and students and talking about different components within the master plan. We hope to receive the comments, you know, sequentially. If, if, if any group or individual would like to send their comments before April 21st, we strongly encourage it because we know on April 21st, we're going to get a lot of, a lot of mail. So, those of you who might like to comment on it before then, you are most welcome to do so. We will incorporate as much of the, of the comments and revisions as we can, and then present the full document to the board on June, to CAPRA on June 2nd.
May I say something? Are there any consideration for mental health services in these proposals? And how is this going to be done? And we've, we've been so lucky so far that nothing has happened here in CUNY, but we hear all the sign different universities having all kind of problem. And I think it's a time for us to take it very seriously.
Absolutely right. We will make mention of, and based on the memo that I sent to you, what is going on in the area of mental health on the campuses and the importance of having personnel, we will certainly make mention. This is a very important reminder. Thank you, Trustee Morales.
Does the master plan, in the, in the discussion of our need for further investment, does it get into the issues of the CUNY compact with different stakeholders?
Yes.
And what their responsibilities ought to be?
Yes.
So, it, it will make the case for some sort of a rational tuition policy?
Yes.
On, well, let me start this way. We've, we've been discussing with SUNY whether there could be benefits for both institutions in a greater degree of cooperation and, and pursuing state objectives in a, in a common way. I'm going to suggest, perhaps this has already been done, but that, that when the draft, and perhaps the draft that you have is, is far enough along, but it would be good to show the leadership of SUNY, the directions that we're going, because I know SUNY is very, very enthusiastic about certain aspects of our policies, the compact, for example, and the greater degree of integration and so on. And I, I just wonder, it, it might have the effect of encouraging SUNY in some of the same directions, which would then we could present more of a united front than we, than we usually do. So, I, I think
Yeah, I have, I have a strong working relationship with Risa Palm, who is, is the counterpart, my counterpart at SUNY, and I can certainly send her this draft. This would be a heads up to her, what we're thinking.
Ben Owee, John Clark and I have pledged to share drafts of the master plan and sort of comment on each other because there is a, a larger and larger mass of communality that we're seeing between CUNY and SUNY. And I think that really is critical, especially as we get into these very, very difficult budget times that we're facing, that there be some coordination and, and communality of views. So, the answer is yes, more so than we've ever seen in terms of cooperation between SUNY.
Just like to confirm that the University Faculty Senate has, of course, received this draft. We've circulated it to our committees and our constituents, and we will be forwarding as you requested our comments, and we look forward to them.
Comments? The business may have a motion?
Just one, just one thing. I, I just want to
Oh, yes.
Just remind people that we are going to be losing the services of Selma Botman. She has accepted, as many of you in the audience knows, an invitation to join the University of Southern Maine as, as president, and she will be starting there officially in early July.
July 1st.
July 1st. And you will see Selma, obviously, at committee meetings up until that time, but there will be a, a going away party for Selma that we have scheduled on the evening of May, May 13th.
13?
May 13th. There'll be invitations that will be
One day my birthday.
Well, then we'll have a double celebration.
May 14th my birthday.
May 14th, all right. So, Selma, thank you for really the very good work that you did.
Thank you, Selma. It's been a pleasure working with you.
The business may have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some more?
Okay. Thank you, everyone.[1625.21]